I will call this eleven nineteen twenty twenty four, uh, city council meeting to order. Councilman Boswell will lead us in the prayer and the pledge.
Our Father, tonight, we pray that your blessings will be upon our mayor and his family as they go through these moments, difficult times. We pray that the decisions that we make will always be the right for this city and the people of this city. Our devotion is to and our responsibility is for the people of the city of Andalucia. We thank you, Lord, for the government, state of Alabama, and for the national government. Be with them as they make difficult decisions. In Jesus Christ's name we ask these things. Amen. Ready, salute, pledge.
Pledge, please, to the flag of United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with the agenda, let me give you a brief update on our mayor. Uh, Mayor Johnson, as you know, is recovering from a fall that occurred back in September. Unfortunately, he has had a setback, had to have his gallbladder removed, and had some complications then from that procedure. Thankfully, he is on the mend. He has resumed physical therapy and is looking forward to being at City Hall in the not-too-distant future. We would like to wish him continued improvement and look forward to his return. Also on the agenda tonight, we have the proposed ordinance. We had the first reading, uh, at the last meeting on eleven five. Uh, we will be transferring, if the ordinance is passed, property to Kaneka Sausage for the construction of apartments. Uh, the owners recognize the need for additional housing in Andalusia and in Covington County. And they plan to bring twenty of their current employees from Evergreen, uh, to these apartments to help transition and to train, uh, the other hundred and ten employees they will have to be hiring, um, uh, to, to fill the jobs. So... My fingers don't work as they once did. Kaneka Sausage is an equal opportunity employer. Uh, they are subject to the same employment laws in both the state of Alabama and, uh, the federal laws, uh, for any company that has fifty or more employees. This proposed ordinance moves the location that was initially proposed to a different location within the industrial park. Uh, the new location is across the street from where the plant is being built in the corner of Progress Drive and Sutton Road. It is completely surrounded by land owned by either the city or the industrial board. So it will not be touching any outside land. So with that, we will begin our agenda. You have before you the minutes of the previous meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve or to make corrections.
Mr. Powell, I make a motion that we approve the minutes with some corrections as presented.
Okay, and those corrections include the spelling of Councilman Mount's name.
Also, Mr. Powell, on the last page, you're listed as the mayor pro tem, and you were asked at that meeting.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to make corrections. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, the same privilege, and it carries. In the way of new business, we have ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven, declaring the fifteen acres in the industrial park property surplus to be donated to the Kaneka Sausage Housing Development. Uh, that has been, uh, uh, we have gone over that. The, uh, property will be used. There will be twenty apartments built. There will be ten two-bedroom, two-bath, and, uh, uh, ten, uh, three-bedroom, three-bath, I believe. Total cost will be a little over two million dollars. The city will not be putting any money into the building of the apartments. So do I have a motion to approve resolution, uh, or ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven?
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion for twenty twenty-four dash eleven, declaring the industrial property surplus for Covington County, Covington Kaneka Sausage Housing Development.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Griffin. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Boswell has seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye, raising your right hand, and any opposed, the same privilege, and that carries. All right, we have a, uh, a request from the State of Alabama Alcoholic Beverage Control Board for a retail table wine, uh, on- or off-premise application for the Pizza Hut. Uh, that is under new ownership, but they have had a license there for a number of years. So do I hear a motion that we approve this request?
I make that motion.
All right, Councilman Boswell makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Uh, Councilman Mount has seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, that is three. Any of that is, uh, opposed, let it be known by the same privilege? And are there any abstentions? And I am an abstention, so we have, uh, three, four, one against, and one no vote, so the motion carries. All right, we have the animal shelter contract. This is, uh, the ci- with the city of O.P. It, we entered into that contract back, uh, early last year. They wanted to, to bring, uh, a hundred cats every year, uh, to our facility. They have a cat nuisance problem there, and the cost that they're going to pay us is a flat rate of three thousand dollars for one hundred cats. Any cats above one hundred will be billed to the city of O.P. for fifty dollars each. And then the, the, uh, uh, the center will take care of them. So I would entertain a motion to approve...
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the animal shelter contract as you have, um, expounded on.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Nix. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Griffin. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of approving this contract, let it be known by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
And it carries unanimously. Let's back up to, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine, approving an agreement with Emerald Coast Utilities Authority for the processing of the Andalusia City recycling materials. Uh, this is a contract for one year, and we would pay sixty dollars a ton, uh, for the waste, the, any that had to be taken to the landfill. If we take good material and they find that twenty-five percent of the load is contaminated, then we will pay sixty-five dollars per ton to dispose of that. That's the same as in the current contract that we enter with them. So I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine, approving an agreement with Emerald Coast Utility Authority for recycling.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Mount. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Nix. Is there any further discussion? If not, then all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same privilege, and it carries. We had a presentation, uh, from Flock Safety, uh, during the workshop. Uh, the police chief has been working with our I.T. group, uh, regarding cameras, uh, for the safety of, of people within our area. Uh, it's something that we're gonna take a look at, uh, gonna get the chief to meet with each of the councilmen over the next couple of weeks. Uh, get Gary to, uh, explain to us about the I.T. side of it. We'll look at the benefits, and then we will make a decision regarding, uh, that presentation in the not-too-distant future. Is there anything else from the council tonight? All right, we have some guests that are with us. If someone, uh, would like to address the council, uh, you are welcome to do so. We will have a, a two-minute, a limit, and ask you to come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I am Jacob Irwin, and I live at two fifteen Rose Lane Drive. I will try to make the, get this out of the way because God forbid if we ever have more than a two-minute conversation about our community. Last week, I asked legitimate questions about which you do not have a single answer. In regard to the donation of the fifteen acres for Kaneka Sausage on top of the seventy acres you already gave them and the developer for the proposed apartments, section ninety-four of the Alabama Constitution nineteen oh one states that there is to be no expenditure of public funds in aid of private individuals or corporations. And quote, "It has been pointed out that the evil to be remedied is the expenditure of public funds in aid of private individuals and corporations, regardless of the form which such expenditures may take." Now, there is an exception to this rule, especially under industrial development. That exception is what's called public purpose. And you must be able to explain how this appropriation benefits some significant portion of the public. From your description last week as to the reasoning for this expenditure, it is because we will allegedly make money on the back end through taxes, yet you had no projections. That very response is in violation of section ninety-four defined by Attorney General opinion two thousand one dash one eight seven, stating the courts have held this as a matter of law, the creation or increase of tax revenues does not serve a public purpose. I also extended my help two weeks ago with this matter and did not receive a phone call. On top of that, I called your office multiple times and asked for environmental review records for Kaneka Sausage, to which I was ignored. Per ADECA, the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, it is mandated that these are considered public documents and must be available to the public upon request at the project location, county courthouse, and city-town offices. The reasoning as to why I want to review the E.R.R. is because Kaneka Sausage willfully puts sodium nitrate in most of their products. Sodium nitrate causes cancer. And we, the public, have a right to know how this impacts our environment and what, if anything, you're going to do about mitigating cancer-causing agents and chemicals in our water and sewage system. And chief, this land pays, pays for your flock system.
In terms of the sodium nitrate, that is approved by the FDA. The, no one, no one, no one makes you buy it. You don't have to eat the sausage.
I don't buy that trash.
That, that's fine. Uh, there are lots of people that like it, and, and they will eat it.
I'm sure your doctors appreciate it.
They, they will be...
But I only did my water system. That's what I'm trying to tell you. What are we doing to mitigate? Why can't I get an envi- environmental review record? Then I'm supposed to be able to get it from their office in May morning. I called for two weeks since the last meeting to get this report, and they're never there or they don't have it.
We don't have it. It's, it's part of Kaneka Sausage.
It's public record.
Then you have to get it from Kaneka Sausage. They're the ones that have it.
It says right here, this is all law, I'm only saying, I mean, if you're not leaving the state of Alabama. Here you go.
You can read that.
Order.
You can't give away public land for free unless it serves a public purpose.
And, and it does, and that it provides jobs.
And this is being done under Amendment seven twenty-five of the Constitution of Alabama, and proper notice was given and the public meeting was held. It's been done properly.
This is a public meeting. You don't serve a public purpose. It just, it says that the revenue from taxes, which that's what we claim, is what we're gonna get. That doesn't matter.
It's, it's providing jobs for our community, and that is... We can't instruct them who to hire.
Well, then we can't give them free land unless we have a contract review stating that, hey, you for sure are gonna hire Andalusian, Covington County employees versus Greenheart, Greenheart employees.
I think we're on different pages here, and there is no re- no, sir. We've already done it. We've already done it, and we have done our due diligence. I read, no, sir, we are not. And if you will please be quiet while I finish. We have followed every aspect of the law. If this goes to court, we will win because we have followed exactly what the law has said that we should do. The fact that you don't like sodium nitrate has nothing to do with whether the city gives them anything. That's...
That's not what this is about.
It's not.
This is about public land, not yours. You see, if you read those papers, it told you, you could lease it to them for a dollar a year, and everything would've been legit, okay?
It's legit as it is because we have followed...
Is that what you're telling me? Did you...
I'm telling you, I'm telling you that the Attorney General's opinion does not apply to the, the seven twenty-five that we operated under. So we have done everything legally.
And what does seven twenty-five say? Since I didn't hear it last meeting. What does it say?
It allows Covington County and certain cities within Covington County to, to do basically anything if they've given proper notice and find that there's a public purpose. And that's what the council voted. They found a public purpose.
A public purpose has to serve the majority of your public. Are they gonna know if all of us in the public...
Sir, I think you're misunderstanding. I'm sorry, but I...
Okay, this meeting is about to be adjourned, and we will stop this. Yes? Would, would you tell us your name and address?
I'm Rod Sylvester, two fifteen Sanford Road. And I, I, you sort of described that the property was part of the industrial park. And it, does it meet, is one side of it part of Andalusia, or is it part of Heath?
No, it, it is, uh, not in the city limits of Andalusia.
So where, if there are children at the apartments, where will they be zoned to go to school?
Probably, as it is now, would be Strong.
So we're gonna bring, the city's gonna bring in workers, or, or Kaneka Sausage...
No, we're, we're not. They are.
Kaneka Sausage is gonna bring in workers on fifteen acres supplied by the city of Andalusia. But if there's any children there, they're gonna go to Strong.
That's correct.
Okay.
But keep in mind, the building that is being built, that school tax which goes to the county schools, the same as the city schools, cannot be abated. So there's going to be...
My concern is not a tax concern. That's not my concern.
No, but the school is gonna get a pretty healthy influx of revenue as a result of Kaneka Sausage and those apartments.
We've seen in other towns in Alabama where, and I don't know who they're gonna hire, just like you said, they hire, they won't. But if they do hire non-English-speaking employees, and those employees bring their children, then that's gonna be an increase in the, for the county school system, the, bringing in paraprofessionals to help teach these children. So is it gonna be enough tax to pay for those paraprofessionals?
There's going to be a considerable amount of tax generally.
They have no clue.
Well, I'm, I don't, and I'm being respectful. I don't know who, no, you, and I'm not. I'm asking something totally separate. I mean, I just was wondering if the city is providing property to a, uh, industry that the city's bringing in to a city industrial park where those children are gonna go to school, if, if there's any children. Like, there won't be any children. But with, if you're building three-bedroom apartments, I would assume that's for families.
Right.
Right.
But we have no idea who's gonna, and we, we cannot tell them who they can bring in.
I understand.
That's...
Okay.
But I s- I still am convinced that it's better to bring in a business to provide jobs. Now, if local people choose not to work at those jobs, the city, there's nothing the city can do about that. I've heard about all the Haitians. I've heard nothing from Kaneka about Haitians.
I'm not saying it's gonna be Haitians. I'm like, I'm not saying who it's gonna be either. I'm just wondering if it's gonna, if they are not, whether they're Haitians or they're from somewhere else. If they're non-English speakers and they're gonna go into a county school system, who's gonna pay for the people, the paraprofessionals that are gonna needing to be, need to be hired to teach the children?
There should be adequate funds, this, the, the funds that are being gotten for the schools through the state. And the, the county increased the sales tax to give to the schools in addition to what the state gives. They are right now getting the most funding they have ever gotten.
Well, I'm sure this isn't news to you. I didn't, I mean, it's been in the news that cities in A- in Alabama have struggled with this problem. And, and that, it doesn't seem fair to me that the city of Andalusia is gonna bring in, give somebody property that's gonna affect the county school system and not that Andalusian school. That's just my opinion.
I'm...
But now I'm not on the council, so I don't, I don't get the vote. I, I, I think that, I think that that should've been considered by the council. There should've been some consultation with the county school board and probably the Covington County Commission, since all of these, uh, all of those entities are gonna be affected by the, could be affected by the decision that you've made tonight.
You know, it would be real easy to just not try to attract business and let people travel to find jobs.
It also would be easy to attract business and then have, uh, private citizens build houses or build apartments instead of giving somebody property to build prop- to build apartments. We've, we've got, uh, developed persons...
We have offered property to locals that have chosen not to do.
Trust me, I, I realize you've offered lots of property, and outsiders, I realize that.
And we, they've chosen not to do it.
My, my real concern, I don't really wanna get into that or any of this, whether it's right or wrong, I'm sure y'all follow the policy. Uh, uh, doubting that you dotted your i's and crossed your t's about doing this because I know Mr. Christians, I'm quite sure, he buttoned it up real good. But I, that was just my concern. If we have an influx of non-speaking, non-English-speaking children, where, where are they gonna go to school? To answer your question, if they're gonna go to Strong, that's where they're gonna get it.
Well, and we don't know that they're going to be non-English speaking.
Well, we don't, but if they are, then they're gonna go to Strong.
Uh, they, they will have an option to go to Andalusia. There, there's a fee, but they can choose to do that, and many students do.
Okay, well, that, I mean, I, I guess... Okay, well, that, I mean, I, I guess that makes me feel a bit, a little better 'cause the first answer, I interpreted your answer to mean they went...
The, the zone will be for Strong, but they are not forced to go there.
Is Andalusia gonna provide transportation if they choose to go to Andalusia?
If school bus runs, they will. You know, they're gonna hire a hundred other employees. We can't determine whether they're gonna be Hispanic or whatever.
I understand that.
I mean, gosh, you're just parking up the wrong tree.
But, but a lot of those people...
I'm, I'm not, or, I'm, I'm asking a simple question.
Well, I think you've answered.
Well, and I'm done. I'm good with the answer.
Let, let, let me, let me answer this, Rod. Of the hundred and ten people, many of those will be not living in those apartments. And they're going to be county residents and city residents, and if they have children, they will already be in school. They won't have to change. That's gonna be the vast majority, hopefully, of the people that are employed there.
Well, and I hope you're right also. I hope they're awesome coming in. I have my doubts about it.
Well, I...
And that, and that's my concern. And to Councilman Mount, I'm, I mean, my question's been answered, but I'm not trying to argue about it. I'm just expressing my opinion. Like, I do feel like there should've been some discussion about that with, and there, maybe there was, I don't know. I, I should probably be more involved in, in the city government than I am. Maybe y'all did discuss this with the county school board. I have not seen any information.
I have not.
And I'm just saying that the city, the city council is making a decision for your right to do. I'm not debating that. That's gonna affect, and I'll just be perfectly blunt. I'm talking about Strong High School because I went to Strong High School, and I'm a big supporter of Strong. And I'm concerned about it.
And, and I hope there's nothing for you to be concerned about.
I'm saying Strong High School. I mean Strong School.
Right, I, I understand that.
That, that's my only concern, and that was my question.
But the county commission has been in discussions with the ca- uh, the city, uh, and, and they have worked with us on this project. It is not just the city of Andalusia that is doing this, so...
Well, and that's, uh, you back to my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any others? If not, is there anything else from the council? If not, we will be adjourned.